Alright, welcome, 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 welcome. We are drawing more anatomy today. Anatoly... Anatoly has breast... uh, sorry, blessed me, not breast me. Alright, we are, we are drawing more anatomy today, alright? Now, this one, this, like yesterday, we did, uh, all of this sit. Okay, 1, 2, 3 and 4, okay? So we did the back muscles, the front torso muscles and also kind of like the arm muscles, even the back of the arm muscles, alright? Uh, and the front of the leg, okay? So today, we are gonna do the things that are invisible to the eye, okay? Even, uh, I think yesterday, we even did the back of the leg, okay? So over here, something like this, right? So this is almost like a back of the leg, so... But today, we are still gonna do the back of the leg, okay? So let me write it down, what are we gonna do today? Alright, first and foremost, armpits. Okay, secondly, the side muscles. Muscles of the body, so everything, everything from over here to, uh, to the leg, alright? And thirdly, okay, yeah, yesterday, we also did the inner, inner muscles of the thigh and the leg, so that works, alright? Side muscles of the body, okay? And thirdly, thirdly, uh... Back. Back legs, okay? Fourth, hips or booty. Hold on, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll do this hips one later, okay? When we are gonna do bobs and hips. So we're gonna do bobs and booty together, alright? So we're gonna do bobs and booty together, okay? Bobs, booty and pelvis together, alright? So we're gonna do that together. And, oh yeah, and the neck, holy shit. Neck, all views of the neck, okay? But it is not necessary, so I don't know if I will do the neck stuff, okay? And we're gonna do bobs, booty and pelvis, uh, later in the, in the next stream, alright? So let's do it. And what else is remaining, okay? The muscles of the palm, sorry, hand and, and feet, okay? We can do that, but that is still not necessary, it's, it's pretty easy, it doesn't even matter that much. I might do, uh, another stream for that, so what is remaining? Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna divide this into 3 sections. Today, we are gonna do this right now, okay? Then comes booty or hips. And... Pelvis and... Boobs, alright? And after this comes, after this, I'm gonna do hands and feet muscles. What else is remaining? Facial muscles? Nah, it isn't that necessary at all, alright? So these are the most important muscles of the body. We can also do, uh, hold on. We can also do knee and elbow, yeah. We can also add in knee and elbow and other stuff as well, oh, hold on. Alright, whatever, let's just, let's just start with the first one. Let us start with the first one, okay? So booty, hips, booty, pelvis and bobs will be the next, I don't know. Next stream or next to next stream like tomorrow, right? So... And the hand, feet, knee and elbow will be after that. Or maybe next case, next stream, we will see, okay? Uh, hold on, let me, let me grab my water, I'll be right back. And then we're gonna draw the armpits and neck. Alright, give it 2 minutes, hold on, I forgot to, uh... Do something. Alright, let's do this sit. Let's do this sit. I also have a, I don't know, idea for doing this. Okay, but YouTube is like... So I also have an idea of doing PP, okay? For both the genders, but YouTube is like gonna, I don't know, not allow me to do that, it will be restricted on YouTube, so that is why we are probably not gonna do it. On YouTube at least. We might suggest it while doing, I don't know, this thing, okay? While doing this thing, we might suggest it, but other than that, no. Alright, let's do it, uh, what is it? Armpits and neck, yes. First and foremost is armpits and neck. Sorry, I took a lot of time, 12 minutes wasted for absolutely nothing. So I did not, I did not have an idea of doing this, so we are not gonna draw the face. There is a face on the reference, but we are not gonna do it. Because our goal is to not draw a face, but to draw... The muscles. We are also not gonna draw the hands, right? So over here, the what, the muscles that are important, oh shit, hold on. The muscles that are important are... The armpit muscles over here and the neck muscles over here, so we're gonna draw that first. Okay, so that is, that is the most important part, everything else is like not so important. Alright, time to do it. First and foremost, the neck muscles, okay? What is this muscle? I, I told, I taught you yesterday, children. This is the sternocleidomastoid. Alright, this is the sternocleidomastoid. And there, there are a lot of muscles over here as well, okay? So something like this, alright? But we are not gonna draw it, because they are, they are not so visible in the, in the neck. But you can have something like this, just a single line or something, okay? But it is not necessary. Then over here, this is not a muscle. This part is the voice box and the throat and the thorax and all that kinda, and the larynx and all that kinda shit, alright? This is not a muscle, okay? And then... So this is the voice box. And then here, there is this depression where there is no muscle, just flesh, okay? Now, this sternocleidomastoid intersects in the, sorry, starts over here somewhere, okay? In the, in the skull, alright? In the, it attaches itself in the skull. And then intersects itself in the clavicle. I think it's a clavicle, if I'm not wrong. Clavicle or sternum, I, I'm, I'm not so sure about it, alright? So yeah. And the muscle over here like this one, okay? This one is not the neck muscle, this one is, 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 is... The trapezius muscle, which comes from the backside, alright? Something like this, alright? It, it a chat, it, it like wraps around over here. So this one that, that I'm, I'm grabbing right now, that is the trapezius muscle. So neck is done, neck is very simple. The only muscle that you need to, uh, remember is this sternocleidomastoid muscle of the neck, which helps in rotating the neck sideways and stuff, alright? And this trapezius muscle, which, I don't know, wraps around the neck on the upper side. This is the only muscle that you need to know and this voice box, of course, okay? Which is very, very, which is very important, which is a very important landmark of the body. Alright, next stop. Okay? This is the pectoralis muscle. Also called as, but in varmen, okay? When you're drawing varmen. Okay, hold on, give me a minute. When you're drawing varmen, it will constitute as the boobs muscle. So remember that, this is the pectoralis muscle, this is, hold on, let me show you. Okay, this is kind of like tricky, okay? This is pectoralis major over here and this is pectoralis minor over here, alright? So yeah, so remember that, very important stuff, alright? You can also do, do the pectoralis muscle like this, okay? Now, I just did the booby shape, okay? You can, you can just skip that and just do the... Do something like this, yes, sorry, yes. This is pectoralis major and this is pectoralis minor, sorry, sorry, sorry. I initially did only the pectoralis major shape, which is also the shape of the boobies, so yeah, remember that. Sorry, give me a minute. Sorry, I had some cough that came out of my mouth. You, that sucks, big time. Alright. Now, over here, this part is the sternum, okay? This is, this is the sternum and, uh... This is typically hollow and, and, and with a lack of muscle, okay? So that is why over here, it's like all bone and stuff, bone and cartilage and stuff, alright? There is this one more muscle over here, okay? I do not know the name of this muscle, so it is the neck muscle, okay? And, and I think, uh, not here, okay? This is the depression between that muscle and this muscle. So this muscle, I do not know the name of, so you can just, I don't know, Google it or something, I don't know. I could be wrong while I'm drawing this, so... Take this with a grain of salt, okay? Because I am not using a anatomy reference, I am just using a simple reference. I'm just flexing my brain for all this shit. Alright, now... Okay, now that we have drawn the pectoralis muscle, okay? This is gonna be where the abs will begin. Alright, and this is the obliques. And over here... These are serratus anterior muscles, okay? These are, these muscles are very, I don't know, very serrated. They are like teeth-like, okay? They are teeth-like, that is why they are like called as serratus anterior muscles. Though these muscles lie on the ribs, so they help in breathing, okay? Breathing in and breathing out, okay? Along with the diaphragm muscle, which is situated some, somewhere over here, okay? So this, this part over here, okay? This, this muscle, which separates the pectoralis muscle and the rectus abdominis muscle or the abs, okay? You can... Hold on, let me explain y'all. You can call this as a diaphragm muscle, but I do not know exactly what that is called as, okay? So I could be wrong, so yeah. Alright, so yeah. Now, for the next one. Okay. Now for the next one, alright, hold on, hold on, give me a minute. Give me a minute, alright? Now, this is the tough part, alright? This is, this is the really tough part, alright? So this is the bicep muscle, this is the bicep, oh, sorry, this, sorry, 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 sorry. This is the tricep muscle, not the bicep muscle. Okay? Over here, right? And then this is the bicep muscle over here, which is like, I don't know, which is on the front of the arm, alright? Something like this. Both of them intersect over here under the, in the humerus section, alright? Now this... Look at this, what is this? What is this? A familiar muscle, deltoid, yay! That is the deltoid muscle and this is the rear part of the deltoid, alright? So both of these are the deltoid muscles, alright? And this is the big depression that you see, the big hole that you see under your armpits. Alright, this, this, this part is the big depression, okay? Now, there is this big muscle that is coming from over, uh, from the backside over here, alright? Hold on, let me, let me see, yeah. I might have done this wrong, but we are gonna do it. but we are gonna do it. This one, alright? What is this? What is this? Okay, it intersects over here somewhere, I don't know. Okay, I might have done this wrong, okay? So take this again with a freaking grain of salt. Freaking grain of salt. And this is the freaking depression that you get under your arms. Oh, welcome, hi, uh, I'm Indian. I did not see your message, so please, sorry. Alright? This is the depression, so this muscle over here, okay, hold on, let me, let me draw it properly. So this muscle over here is the latissimus dorsi, okay? This is the deltoid. Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna write down the, all the names, okay? This is the back muscle, okay? The big back muscle, uh, this one, okay? So everything that you see over here, this big back muscle is that muscle that, that I drew over there, okay, this one. This one. This is the latissimus dorsi, it wraps around like this. Then the, this is the rear deltoid. This is the anterior deltoid, okay? And this is the triceps. And this is the biceps muscle over here. That's the elbow. Same goes over here, okay? So over here, this is gonna be the tricep muscle. And the bicep muscle will be more apparent over here because her arm is versus side, okay? Bicep, and over here somewhere, under the bicep, it is, there is something called as the brachialis muscle, okay? So, so remember that. This is again gonna be what? Tell me what? Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. It, it will go something like this, yes. And, and the chest muscle will go something like this, yes, sorry. I, I made a mistake over there, okay? So, this, uh, front of the deltoid will go something like this and the chest muscle will go under it, okay? The pectoralis muscle will, will definitely go under it somewhere, alright? Something like this. It's, it's kind of like complicated to draw, you know? So you can just, I don't know, have something like this or like that, I don't know, man. Even like this is fine, because the chest muscle is going under it, so whatever, man. It's kind of like difficult to draw, you know? Without a ref, without an actual reference. So this is again, uh, deltoid, uh, front of the deltoid, okay? This is the rear of the deltoid. This muscle over here, alright? Always use a reference, I don't know why I'm not using a reference, but it's fine. We all make mistakes. I do not have a live reference though, because I had that live app on my other phone, which is like gone for servicing because the battery got, I don't know, swollen or something. Right, so I do not have live reference for now, right now. And over here, okay, this one, this is the brachioradialis muscle. Okay, so this one is also very important. It's, it gives your forearm this iconic bulge, alright, so yeah. I'm not gonna draw this part in this stream at least. We'll draw it later on. Okay, and there are a lot, lot of muscles over here, alright? So... There are a lot, lot of small, small muscles over here, so... It is very, it will be very wise to remember that. Alright, armpits done, okay? We might have, uh, I don't know, busted this part, okay? This part and this part, alright? But it's fine, armpits are done finally. Yeah, something like, it goes something like this, and then this is... Okay, hold on, let me, let me show you properly. This is the trapezius muscle, alright? Which wraps around this, okay? So yeah, this, this one, this, this is more, uh, perfect. The deltoid is going, gonna go something like this, alright? Then this will be the bicep muscle and this will be the depression. This depression that we all have in our armpits, okay? Then this will be the rear deltoid, alright? And over here somewhere, there will be this latissimus dorsi muscle. Over here somewhere, right? Which is not visible in this photo. And then this will go, attach itself, this ligament will go attach itself to the elbows. Alright, yep, that's it. This is the armpit muscle anatomy, yo! Okay, so the important thing, okay, hold on, let me, let me finish this. The important thing to remember is this depression over here, okay? So when you're drawing the arm, something like this, alright? What you need to do is... Yep, this thing, okay? You need to do this thing. This diamond shaped stuff. This diamond shaped stuff, alright? So this depression is what is important, okay? This diamond shaped stuff. This will be the deltoid and the, and the biceps muscle over here, which will be intersecting under the, under, over here, alright? And then this will be your rear deltoid, alright? This will be the front deltoid or anterior deltoid, okay? Then this will be the tricep muscle over here. This is the bicep one, okay? This will be the lat muscle and this will be your, uh, pectoralis major muscle, okay? So remember that, so this depression is what is the most important thing when drawing the armpits. So I might have, I don't know, made the depression kind of like big, but it will be something like this. Depending upon how much muscle you have. So if you have too much muscle, then the depression will be smaller. If you have too less muscle, then the depression will be larger. That is the armpit anatomy. Okay, what is next? We gonna do it, okay? Front of the neck is done, armpits are done, okay? Then... Side muscles, alright? We gonna do the side muscles now. I have a beautiful varman over here. Beautiful varman. We are gonna make her buff. Slightly buffed, so that we can show, uh, the muscles of the body, okay? I might have butchered the central line. I always do that, man, I'm not so good at drawing. Not so good at, I don't know, anything really. Might have butchered that part as well, but it's fine. Doesn't matter. That's more like it, the hand was like, kind of like weird, you know? Uh, okay. Alright, now the side muscles of the body, alright? Uh, might, I might, uh, do this a bit viral, okay? First and foremost, the neck muscles, okay? We, we gonna do, we gonna be done with the neck muscles. But I don't know, I don't, I do not wanna waste time on that one, okay? Now she is like looking over here, so it's something like this, her face. So this is again gonna be the what? Sternochleidomastoid. Alright? And this... What is this? Tell me what is this? This is the, uh, I don't know, T, sorry, T3 or C7? I think it's C7, it's not P3. P3 would be something like over here or something, I don't know. It's C7 actually. C7 vertebra, okay? This is the trapezius. Yes, this is the trapezius muscle, the upper trapezius muscle, which wraps around the neck or the shoulder, I don't know. I'm just gonna draw it like very fast. I'm not gonna waste too much time on this one. The most important part is this part over here. That is why I'm like doing this. Okay, the backside, I'm gonna draw like real fast. Because, because I already covered it yesterday, so i- if y'all did not watch it, y'all need to watch it. Holy shit. I need to freaking shout it, no. I'm sorry, man, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Okay? There is gonna be another, uh, diamond over here, okay? These are the supra-spineitis and infraspineitis muscle, okay? And this is the latissimus dorsi, which comes over, which wraps over the supra-spineitis infraspineitis muscle, okay? This is gonna be another diamond over here. I do not know which vertebra is this, okay? But this is another depression or something, or maybe, I don't know, a vertebra. Alright, and what is next? Yes, the latissimus dorsi will be something like this, alright? And this is gonna be the hip muscle or the gluteus maximus muscle. This is gonna be the hip bone over here somewhere. Already, uh, pelvic bone. The pelvic bone, yes. Yeah, that is, that is like that. It's a disc basically, I simplified it. So you get the point. These are the shoulder blades. This is gonna be the gluteus maximus. It is gonna be a very big muscle, something like this, alright? Yes, that is the gluteus maximus muscle. I do not know which muscles are over here, or is this just a depression, like, I don't know which one? This is the ligament. So this one is the, is a lot of, there is a lot of ligament and cartilage over here. Okay, so it appears something like this. Same goes over here as well, this diamond, okay? Alright. Now, let's do the deltoid, deltoid. Where is your deltoid? Okay, the deltoid will be like this. Oh, sorry, like this, okay? Yes, it is, it is this heart shaped thing, okay? So the trapezius intersects under the deltoid over here, okay? And the deltoid is something like this, the heart shaped thing, alright? This is the rear trapezius, the middle, uh, sorry, rear deltoid, middle deltoid and the front deltoid. Anterior deltoid or something, I don't know. Alright, then over here, it's the biceps. And over here, there are the triceps. Oh wait, no, 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 no. Hold on, hold on, hold on, no, 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 no. So this is the recularis, okay? This is the bicep. And over here, it's the tricep. And over here, this is the bone, okay? This is a lot of, I don't know, ligaments over here. I do not know if any, there is any muscle over here, so this is basically the bone, bony structure over here. So this is not entirely filled with muscle, bone and flesh, that's just bone and flesh. Uh, what else? This is gonna be the pectoralis muscle over here. Can draw the boobies as well. Next, now this is very important, so pay attention. This is the latisimus dorsae muscle, which is wrapping around from the backside, alright? And over here... These are the sartorius muscle group, okay? The teeth-like muscles, alright? And then, over here, this is the obliques. The external oblique and the internal oblique, okay? Alright. Yep. And then over here, there are a lot of pelvic muscles, so I do not know which ones are they. But you can just, I don't know, do something like this. I could be wrong though. So I'm not gonna do that, alright? So yeah. We're gonna do the pelvic muscles later on, alright? Yep, so that's it, that, those are the side muscles, okay? So this is the latisimus dorsae, then this is the, uh, rotator cuff muscles over here somewhere, I don't know, man. I think I made the trapezius a bit too small. Something like this. So these are the rotator cuff muscles over here. Yep, and that's it. So this was, I don't know, back steady plus a side steady, so this... This latisimus dorsae, so the side is important because this latisimus dorsae wraps around and intersects under over here, okay? And these are the sartorius muscle groups. On the ribs, and these are the obliques. Obliques are something like this, okay? So this is the, kind of like the external, oh, sorry, external oblique, okay? And these are the internal obliques, so... External obliques are wrapped over the internal obliques. So remember that, that is a good point to remember. So that is why we have this bulge over here, alright? See this, this external oblique bulge? That's it, oh, that's it. These are the gluteus muscles, gluteus maximus. Gluteus minimus, I don't remember which one is gluteus maximus, gluteus minimus. But you get the point. And this intersects into the humerus over here, right? So something like this. So it is not gonna be round over here, it's not gonna overlap, it's gonna be something like this, yes. So this, this is gonna intersect into the humerus over here, alright? This is gonna have the depression, that famous depression. Alright, PP. And from over here, there is another hand or arm, which you can draw if you want. This is again the... Geltoids. And the biceps. Sorry, triceps. No, 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 it's wrong. Yes, the biceps, these are the biceps, sorry. And over here, there will be the triceps. Just gonna rub this one. To make it more, I don't know, simple to see. So the trapezius muscles are divided into three parts, okay? So one... So this is part one, sorry. The upper traps is part one over here, alright? This is part two. Middle traps, and these are the lower traps, okay? So remember that, they are divided into three parts. And this diamond is what, what separates all of the three parts, you know? The three parts create this diamond, so remember that. That is a good, that is probably the most important landmark. Alright, we are done, we are done. We are done with this, now moving on to the next one. So the important thing over here was these external oblique muscles and the internal oblique muscles, along with the serratus muscles over here, right? Hold on, let me, let me draw the serratus muscles properly. It's kind of like difficult to draw the serratus muscles. Yep, now it's fine. So yeah, I might have drawn this incorrectly in a way, okay? So take this, or I don't know, the grain of salt, but this is the gist of it. If you hear a music, if you hear some noises in the background, there is a lot of construction going on where I live, so, uh, that is why there are some noises. Okay, one more thing that I wanted to mention, so this is, this over here, the trapezius ends over here, and this muscle over here is the back neck muscle, alright? So remember that, this muscle over here. Or I don't know, maybe it's just the trapezius that just goes in, into the head over here, I don't know, man. We will see. Alright, now what is next? Next is side muscles of the body, the armpits done, neck done, okay? Now the back of the legs. Only the back of the legs is remaining, so I'm gonna do that. Okay, let me, let me search the back of the legs, hold on. Let me get a goo, good freaking reference. Woo, this is a super cool reference. Where it's like very, I don't know. Might draw this one. Alright, this is a good reference, hold on. This is a really good reference, alright? So I'm gonna draw it. Back leg reference, bitches! Alright, let me draw the muscles properly now, hold on. Alright. Let me break it down, okay? This is gonna be the adductor muscle, okay? Then this is gonna be the uh, quadriceps muscle which is wrapping around, alright? And over here, it's gonna be this. Gastroneumius muscle. Alright, now over here, it's gonna be this gastroenemius muscle again, okay? We'll start from over here, right? Let's not complicate stuff. This again the quadriceps, yes, quadriceps, I forgot. Okay, wait, hold on, I have, I might have butchered this. It's fine. So getting these curves are like super, is like super hard, to be honest. This is gonna be the knee, which is gonna be kind of like visible from the front, from the, from the back. This is again gonna be the gastroenemius. Yep, and that's it. This is gonna be the pelvic muscle or the oblique muscle which is like wrapping around like this, alright? The oblique and the pelvic muscle and this is gonna be the gluteus maximus and the gluteus minimus. Now. Let me draw all of the muscles for y'all. Okay, I might have, I might have made this leg kind of like thick. Now it's perfect, now it's perfect. Alright, we will start, we will start with the, hold on. Alright, we will start with the adductor muscles, alright, over here. These are the adductor muscles. And there are a lot of muscles over here which I am not gonna uh, cover because they are like, I don't know. Kind of like unnecessary unless you're drawing the inside of this part. For, I don't know, NSFW, porpoise or something. I do not know if the adductor muscle is something like this or something different, okay? But we will see, okay? Now, over here, alright? Over here, there are two of these muscles, alright? This is, this is the front quadriceps muscle. This, this part over it. Then this is another muscle over here, which is like going inside of, over here, of the knee joint. This is another one, okay? These are what are called as hamstring. This is also called as, I think, if I'm not wrong, bicephemoris, okay? This is the biceps of the femur bone or the leg muscle. This is the gluteus maximus which is like wrapping at the side of the legs, okay? There will be kind of like a small depression over here, okay? So remember that. A very small depression which is not even visible because it's like, I don't know, covered by fat. Then again, over here, this is gonna be the bicephemoris. This is again gonna be the front leg, front of the, sorry, this is gonna be the uh, quadriceps muscle, okay? The one that I'm shading right now, okay? This is gonna be the knee, the kneecap and shit, okay? This is again gonna be the quadriceps muscle which is like coming around from the front side, alright? And same, this is gonna be the bicephemoris. Alright? Now the gastroenemius muscles, so the gastroenemius is gonna be something like this, alright? It's gonna be something like this, alright? The gastroenemius heads are gonna be something like this. This is why it has more bulge. Uh, it has a bulge on the upper, uh, outside of the upper leg and uh, sorry, it is, it has more bulge on the upper side of the, outside of the leg and the lower side of the inside of the leg, so over here, so. So it is always like uh, offset, okay? Our human body is very offset, so it is very essential to remember that because nothing is in symmetry in our body. Alright, so these are gonna be the two heads of the bicep, sorry, gastroenemius muscles. Two fleshy heads of the gastroenemius muscle, alright? And then over here, this is gonna be the soleus muscle and, and this is the Achilles tendon which attaches itself in the heel of the uh, body, uh, heel of the leg, sorry, not the body. Okay, this is the soleus muscle which is under the gastroenemius muscle over here, alright? And over here, this is the tibialis posterior or something, I don't know, man. These are a lot of muscles over there. I do not know that. And this part is the Achilles tendon. Alright, yeah. That's it, these are the leg muscles, so the most important muscle over here is this one, the bicephemoris. These two heads are like, I don't know, they are called as something, uh, they have names but I do not remember that, okay? So I'm just gonna call this whole thing as the bicephemoris. And this is the famous depression that you get, okay, when drawing the leg, so it is something like this, the depression is something like this. So it is something like this. You can draw it uh, like this also, just to make it more simpler. So something like this, you can draw it something like this as well. Just to make it more simpler. Alright, so yeah. But it's basically a triangle, so this is the ligament of the, I don't know, ligament of the gastroenemius muscle, alright? And these are the, these, these are the heads. So basically that is, basically this depression is a triangle. This is very important depression to uh, because it is directly situated at the back of the knee, alright? So that is a very important depression over there. Alright, so yeah. And this, these, these are the adductor muscles. Which are also important. Oh yeah, and, and, and I forgot, I forgot, hold on, 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 hold on. So over here, there is this another muscle, so this, this muscle that is coming from the front of the leg, this is actually not the uh, the quadriceps muscle, this is actually the, I forgot the name, hold on. I think it's the sartorius muscle, if I'm not wrong, okay? God damn, I forgot the name. Look at this, this is actually the sartorius muscle of the leg, okay, hold on, let me, let me see. Uh. Yep, that is the sartorius muscle, yes. That is the sartorius muscle of the legs. There is no one online in the afternoon, so that is why I do not freaking stream in the afternoon because there is literally no one online. But it's fine, it's fine, no problem. Alright, so yes, that's it, that's about it, okay? The gluteus maximus is like a very big muscle, so it's like I don't know, it just begins from over here and intersects on this part, over here somewhere, who knows? Alright, that's it, that's about it, that's about it for the livestream. We are, we are done with two parts of muscles, muscular and otto. So the most important muscle to remember, muscles to remember is this one. The bicephemoris and the gastroenemius muscle, alright? And also these landmarks are super important, this depression of the knee over here, alright? And then this, this, this bulge of the sartorius, alright? Then they did, then this depression between the sartorius and the adductor muscles, okay? And over here, there are something called as adductor muscle, abductor muscles, so they help in, I don't know, uh, moving the leg on this side, alright? So you can call these as abductor muscles. So abductor of the legs, okay, so these are the abductor of the legs, okay? Then this depression over here, this is where the uh, bicephemoris or the, or the hamstring muscle enters uh, in, sorry. Intersects, sorry, no. What, is it intersects? Yes, intersects into the tibia and fibula bones of the lower leg. Yes, intersects, it intersects. It goes into the tibia and fibula bones of the lower leg and this is the, again, knee. I don't know what this muscle is or this is a, this is a ligament or something, I don't, I don't know. But this is definitely not the knee, okay? So what, I don't know, we will see. Alright, then this, this bulge over here Alright, then this, this bulge over here, this bulge over here, right? These, these are all very important landmarks, okay? This depress, this depression... That's it, this depression. This depression. These are all the important landmarks that are necessary, alright? That are very necessary. This is the flesh part, so this line that I'm making over here is the flesh. This is muscle, but this is also flesh. So, and, and, and over here, it's the PP, which I'm not gonna draw on YouTube. But I just, I did that, I did it just now. Alright, so yeah, remember that, same goes over here, this is a PP. So all of these landmarks are very important. I'm gonna just rub this, so it doesn't look very cluttered, alright? So these are the muscles of the, the side muscles. Now only the side muscles of the legs are remaining, which I'm not gonna do because they are literally nothing, there is literally nothing over there, okay? The side, the, the side of the leg is something like, I don't know, man. Uh, let's see, if you draw the leg like this, alright? The inside of the leg is also not that important because there won't be too much time to draw, too much opportunities to draw the inside. The inside of the leg is mainly filled with this abduct, sorry, adductor muscles and then this is the, uh, and then the union of the back muscles of the leg and the front muscles of the leg, alright? And this thing, the ga, and the lower leg is like filled with gastronomias, that's it. It's not too much, alright? So, let's see. Okay, I'm, I'm still gonna do it, alright, hold on, let me do it, the inside and the outside of the leg. Okay, let's, let's do the inside first. I'm just gonna do it very fast, nothing too complicated stuff. And over here, there are a lot of muscles which I'm not gonna do in this stream, so it will be on the next stream. So what you can do is, you can show adductor muscles over here, alright? Which I'm gonna cover up in the next stream and over here, there is gonna be the gastronomius muscle, okay? Then in the front of the leg, this is gonna be the tibia and this is gonna be the anti, sorry, the tibialis anterior muscle over here, alright? And this is gonna be the soleus muscle, alright? And this is the depression, this is basically the cartilage and the bone and shit, alright? So this is not gonna be any muscle, these are, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is not the inside, sorry, this is the outside of the leg, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is the outside of the leg. Alright, this is the outside of the leg. So this is the soleus, sorry, the hamstring muscle over here, this is the other head of the hamstring over there. And this is the quadriceps muscle. One head of the quadriceps muscle and this is the other head, and this is the third head of the quadriceps muscle. And the fourth head is something, I don't know, somewhere over there. Now the inside, inside looks something like this, so if this is the knee that we are talking about, okay? The inside is pretty fleshy, alright? It is pretty fleshy, okay? This is gonna be the biggest muscle group, the abduct, sorry, the adductor muscle. This is gonna be the gluteus muscle over here, somewhere, I don't know. This is gonna be the biceps femoris. And this is the sartorius muscle which is like coming from the front of the leg, alright? And then this is gonna be... Hold on. This is gonna be the quadriceps muscle at the front. Alright, and this is the gastronomius. Same goes, tibialis muscles on both, both the sides of leg over here, alright? So yeah. And the soleus muscle over here, alright? So this is the inside, this is the outside of the leg. Ah, pretty, pretty, pretty important to remember all this. This freaking deep study. So the adductor muscles, the muscles over here, they are gonna be inside the, uh, gluteus maximus muscle, so remember that. And over here, there is gonna be the, uh, pelvic muscles, alright? So these are all pelvic and abdominal muscles over here, alright, so yeah. Remember all this shit. Alright, we are done for the day, okay? We did a lot of things, alright? Uh, we completed, hold on, let me arrange this shit. We completed very important topics on anatomy. The side muscles and the internal muscles, the back muscles, alright? Especially the armpits, the armpits are like super, I don't know, important. The side muscles are super important, the back muscles of the legs are super important, the inside muscles of the legs are, and the outside muscles of legs are also super important. Everything is super important, okay? So we completed all that today in this stream, alright? One hour forty minutes. So yeah. We got a lot of stuff done. Alright, in the next stream... The side muscles are basically, this is not the complete view of the side muscles, this is more of the back, more of the backside view of the muscles, but it's fine, okay? I might do another side view, uh, in a reference or something, I don't know, we will see, okay? Side muscles are not so, uh, difficult, so this is like, almost like the side view from the front side, alright? And this is the side view from the backside, so you get the point, but I'll still do a reference of the side view, okay, in the, in the coming, upcoming streams, okay? So we still have, I don't know... Booty hips, booty pelvis and boobs, boobs to do. So boobs, pelvis and booty, they're all gonna require the side views, alright? They are gonna also have the side view, so we might do it while doing the boobies. Alright? While doing the, all of the three things over here, oh, wait, where is it? Yeah, so in the next stream, we're gonna do the boobies, pelvis and the booty. So we, we almost like, kind of like did the booty over here, but this is like not a complete, uh... I don't know, not a complete lesson on the booty, so yeah. And again, all of these are not perfectly accurate as per the human body, okay? I might have made a lot of mistakes over here, so that is why, while studying this, uh, watching my videos, also have a reference to the side, an actual muscular anatomy reference and also a skeletal reference on the side. Because I have never come, never covered the skeleton part over here, so yes, I might be wrong, okay? But this is directly coming from my brain from years of studying, okay? Because I also did a course on, on a, a gym trainer course, basically. A personal, personal trainer, gym trainer course, so I have learnt all of the muscular structure and all of, all of, all that shit from that course, so that is like years of... That, that was like years before I even became an artist. Even, even started drawing, basically. I mean, my drawing was like really good from the beginning, but, uh, I only started taking it, uh, seriously from like twenty fourteen and very seriously from like twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two or something, I don't know, okay? So yeah. So that is why, take all of this with a grain of salt, so the, the muscles are not accurate, okay? So they, they might, so I might have made a lot of mistakes, so that is why I always use a reference while studying, studying from me. Studying by watching my videos, alright? So yeah. I'm gonna write it down over here. Alright, and that's it, this is it, this is it for the, for today's class. Today's class on muscle anatomy, we did a lot, a lot of stuff, alright? Especially this armpit still thing and then the back of the leg thing. Legs are like super difficult to draw, if you, if you do not draw them per, draw them properly, they are gonna look very wobbly, right? So they are like super difficult to draw, so that is why. You can of course draw everything else, even, even the arms and all that kinda shit, okay? Even the torso and the back, okay? But legs are like super weird and super difficult to draw because you, you need all of this shit to be like accurate, alright? You can even draw the armpits if you want, right? But legs are like on another level. Even the side leg is fine, side leg is even, I don't know, kind of like easy. But the back of the leg and the front of the leg, like when you're drawing them straight, uh, viewing from the back and the front, alright? They get super difficult to draw, yep. Alright, that's it, that's about it, okay? So yesterday, sorry, day before yesterday, we did these, uh, hand and feet drawings, alright? Uh, because my hand and feet suck, even now they suck, okay? We, I need to do more of these, and then later, yesterday, we did all of these, uh, anatomy drawings, the inside of the legs, alright? These are just basic anatomical drawings, okay? Uh, the front of the torso as usual and the backside, alright? And we drew a vaman, we drew a vaman, okay? And yesterday, I, I focused on, I explained why uh, the straight leg is like super difficult to draw because of all of these various different landmarks over there, okay? That is probably the most difficult thing to draw, haha, okay? And then we did this, just a firing pool, simple firing pool, alright? And today, in this livestream, we did this, alright? The armpits, the back of the leg, rear of the arms, alright? Side and the inside and the outside of the leg and the side view and also the back view, okay? The side muscles and the back muscles, alright? So yeah. And of course, yes, the neck muscles as well, I forgot the neck muscles, holy shit. The neck muscles are important as well, haha, I forgot the neck muscles, Jesus Christ. Look at this, the neck muscles, I forgot them. They are, they are like, they're like just, uh, it's like, only like one muscle is important in the neck and normally, most people do not draw the neck muscles that much, alright? So whatever matters. Oh yes, and of course, I forgot another thing to mention which I had in mind, the clavicle over here, okay? This is probably the most important structure. Important landmark over here. The clavicle bone. So the deltoid muscle will be something like this. This trapezius muscle will be something like this, I don't know, man, alright? This is kind of like difficult to draw because the clavicle, I don't know, when you do this, okay? The deltoid wraps over the clavicle, kind of like over the clavicle, alright? So yeah. So that is, that is kind of like difficult, so that is why I use a reference when you're drawing something like this, alright? So this, this might be wrong, totally wrong. drawing uh something like this alright so this this might be wrong totally wrong so yeah this is why I I told you to get a reference while uh studying from looking at my video alright that's it that's about it that's about it for the day for for this live stream so I will be uh live streaming again in the evening most probably if not in the evening then tomorrow for sure right so this is why you gotta subscribe you gotta subscribe and uh subscribe to YouTube and follow my Twitch okay and also you're enjoying the Discord and that's about it so thank you for watching whoever joined in alright and I will see you in the evening alright so this thing is wrong do not copy this okay use a reference so this deltoid and this clavicle position is kind of like wrong I don't know man we will see I might be right I might be wrong but you get the point anyways that's about it see ya